Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Peoria City Council for Tuesday, August 20th. Would you please rise and join us in a moment of silence? And then I'm going to ask Boy Scout Troop 568 to step forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Can you please step forward? Uh, number here. Introduce yourselves. And please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please introduce yourselves.
Nathaniel Denham.
Jacob Webb.
Carter Penko.
Trent Peterson.
Zachary O'Donnell.
Wade Fickett.
Thank you very much. This is the final call to submit speaker request forms. The speaker request forms can be found at the, in the lobby. Fill them out, give them to the clerk, and we'll call upon you at the appropriate time. Next item up is a recognition of Channel 11 for collaboration with the Peoria Unified School Districts.
Mayor and Council, thank you very much. I'm here with Daniel Airy from the City of Peoria Unified School District. And back in 2012, the very beginning of 2012, we started a program called Peoria Education News Show. And it's a simple name because we went the whole year without figuring out what to call this show. The whole idea behind this show was to do two things. One, demonstrate to the community what a collaborative relationship we have with the school district, as well as fill content for Channel 11. But also, I knew is a great opportunity for the school district to get their news and information out to many of their students, as well as parents. And so, I would like to introduce Daniel Airy, the Director of Public Relations for Peoria Unified School District, and she has a presentation to give.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. It's my pleasure to be here with you tonight on behalf of the Peoria Unified School District. As you know, the district and the city have long shared in a wonderful partnership, one of which, I believe, has served as a model partnership for cities and school districts. We collaborate on a number of initiatives to enhance and better our communities, making Peoria a wonderful place, not only to live, work, and play, but also to learn. When the opportunity was presented to partner for the Peoria Education News Show, it was without question that we took it as another avenue to showcase our remarkable partnership and the outstanding work happening in our school district. Since its inception, the city has helped the district to produce nine episodes of the Peoria Education News Show, resulting in more than 1,300 YouTube views. The show has highlighted our collaborative partnership, things like the Peoria Arts and Cultural Festival, provided updates on behalf of our Superintendent, Dr. Denton Santorelli, as well as featured student achievement, the arts, career and technical education, athletics, among many other things. Our next episode, in fact, is set to feature the newest addition to the Peoria landscape. We'll be breaking ground tomorrow morning on the 33rd Elementary School in the Peoria Unified School District. It will be quite a hallmark for the City of Peoria as well, so we look forward to adding that to our lineup for the Peoria Education News Show. Now, none of our achievements through this show would be possible without the support from Eric Rodriguez, Greg Erman, and Beau Larson from the City of Peoria, for which we are extremely grateful. And we think this is quite a wonderful partnership with endless potential, but we were beyond thrilled when others recognized the success of this show as well. The Arizona School Public Relations Association recently honored our production with an Award of Excellence, which is the highest award that you can receive in the state of Arizona for public relations. It is my pleasure this evening to be here with that award and to present it, Mr. Larson, to you and to the City of Peoria, with our sincere gratitude for this partnership. We look forward to future collaborations, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next item up are the certificates appointment to, for boards and commission members. Would you please join me up front? Ms. Carlet. Counselwoman Carlet is the Chair of the Boards and Commissions?
Counsel Subcommittee for Boards and Commissions. And in the City of Peoria, we have about 22 or 23 now individual boards and commissions, and they are all made up of volunteers, citizens from the City of Peoria, who have decided to donate their, their time, their energy, their experience, their wisdom, to their community. And they give up their nights and their, their weekends, and we could not run this city without them. So, tonight, we are going to welcome some more people to this amazing group. And the first one is Colleen McElroy to the Library Board.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next up is Deborah DeSimone, Economic Development Advisory Board.
Congratulations.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That is, would be my favorite, except it doesn't apply to me.
It doesn't, does it? Joseph McCord to the Citizens Commission on Salaries for Elected City Officials. Big round of applause.
This used to be my favorite commission, except that whatever they recommend won't apply to me because I'm term limited.
Hi, I'm a little slow. I can't hear you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for all that you do.
Okay. Thanks very much. The, because these people volunteer their time, we don't have to hire employees to do those jobs. Once a year, we feed them dinner, so give them a hand.
Thank you. Next up is Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda are all items that are listed with a C. They will be dealt with in one motion, because we've dealt with them before in terms of conversations and other activities, unless a council member requests one to be removed. Do we have any requests for removal? Seeing none, could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Leone, seconded by Mr. Ames. This is the Consent Agenda, all items listed with a C. Please vote. The clerk will record your vote. It is unanimous. Thank you very much. Next is the Regular Agenda. First item up is Unfinished Business. First is a public hearing, rezoning 75th Avenue and Greenway Road, continued from April 9, 2013. Public hearing. Could I have a staff report?
Our Community Planning, Community Development Director, Chris Hockus, will make the presentation of this.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a rezoning case that was last heard by the City Council on April 9, 2013. At that time, the case was continued indefinitely, with a directive for the applicant to hold an additional neighborhood meeting to resolve some outstanding neighborhood concerns. And I'll go through some of those in the presentation. As a refresher, the applicant is D.R. Horton. They have amended their application. They're seeking a rezone of approximately 5.8 acres. It's located at the northeast corner of Greenway Road and 75th Avenue, which is a lighted intersection. The area to the north is a Tierra Norte subdivision. It's zoned R-110, which is the same zoning district the applicant's seeking tonight. The neighborhood to the south is known as Terracida, which is zoned R-112, 12,000 square foot minimum lots, working our way clockwise. At the southwest corner, you recall there's some offices and commercial uses. And then the northwest corner, Arrowhead Shadows, R-18, 8,000 square foot, single-family area. By way of background, the case was initially filed as a rezone, seeking to rezone the property to R-16, 6,000 square foot lots, for a 19-lot, single-family development. There was a neighborhood meeting held last December. At that meeting, there was one attendee, and during the progress in the case review, we received two calls in support, two in opposition, and one in letter in opposition. There were no speakers at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting when they took action. However, you'll recall there was a groundswell of interest in the case after the Planning Commission, and then at the night that we had the City Council meeting. The interest was largely related to the lot size. The residents that attended the council meeting did not feel that the lot size of 6,000 square foot was compatible with the surrounding neighborhoods. So again, as I mentioned, the council took action unanimously to continue the case indefinitely, and for the applicant to hold an additional neighborhood meeting. That neighborhood meeting was held on May 6, 2013, at Pasail Verde Elementary School. There was approximately 50 people in attendance, and I think the overwhelming consensus at that meeting, again, was that R-16 was just not a compatible lot size, given the way the surrounding area has developed. And so, the folks recommended that the area be at least R-110. So the applicant went back and looked at the proposal, and they brought back a revised development plan for the city to look at. And so, the new proposal is to rezone the property to R-110, 10,000 square foot lots. There's a net reduction of seven lots, so they're looking at 12 lots on 5.7 acres. You see the lots are mostly about around 10,000 square feet; there are a couple that are larger in size at the corners, and this produces a density of about two units per This graphic just illustrates for you the request as it was initially filed. Again, the R-16, 19 lots, and then the revision down to 12 lots, and the reduction in density. As part of the project proposal, the applicant would be required to improve both Greenway Road, half-street, curb gutter sidewalk, and landscaping, along with 75th Avenue, and provide appropriate retention and open space. And as you can see on the graphic, that's provided largely on the southwest corner of the site. In terms of general plan conformance, the area that you see in yellow is low-density residential, which calls for moderate-sized, detached, single-family residential, density range of three units per acre. The density for the new proposal is certainly in line with what the general plan calls for, and again, we believe this is also compliant with the general plan. And for those reasons, staff does support the revision to the case, and does recommend council acceptance of Case Z120010, subject to stipulations 1 through 27. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, we'll come back to questions from council, if any. First, we need to open a public hearing. This is a public hearing on the rezoning at 75th Avenue and Greenway Road. Would anyone from the public care to comment? I do have two speaker request forms, so you two don't have to come up right now. I'll call on you. But would anyone else care to comment on this application?
Yeah, I would consider the right to speak if there's any questions around the audience.
Okay. Anybody else? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment. First would be Lorna Thacker. Over here. We ask you to hold your comments to three minutes, and there's a clock up there that they'll start.
Hi, my name's Lorna Thacker. I haven't been to a city council meeting for a long time.
We missed you.
I know. And I haven't spoken at one for even longer, so this is a nice experience to come back. I did want to tell you that I support D.R. Horton's change to R-110 zoning for the northeast corner of 75th Avenue and Greenway Road. It will complete the zoning and development of our area. It's the last empty lot in the area that you saw there, south of the riverbed. And I also believe it will complement the zoning that's in the area currently. I also would like to thank each of you, council member, mayor, for meeting with me and allowing me the opportunity to discuss with you the history of zoning in this area. It was a very pleasant experience. The reception that I've received is much different than the reception I received in 1995, with the first zoning that we had in the area, which is actually the other D.R. Horton lot that they got the R-16 zoning on. So I very much appreciate your reception. I also would like to thank Councilmember Ames for attending another neighborhood meeting and for representing his district, and we very much appreciated that, too. And I would like to thank Chris Hockus, who was very, very helpful, and his staff member, Adam Pruitt, answered a lot of emails, a lot of phone calls, and also attended another neighborhood meeting. So we appreciate the fact that you did request the second neighborhood meeting, and we had an opportunity to review this. So once again, I am grateful for your support. I'm looking forward to the vote that you'll be taking in just a few minutes. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Mark Shushel? Sorry if I'm butchering your name.
Good evening. My name is Mark Scusell. And I'm recently the President of the Homeowners Association of Fort Terracida. That's the subdivision due south of the proposed lots, up for approval tonight. We, as a, we as a homeowners association, support the R-10, 10,000 square foot lot zoning, and would like to thank especially Ron Ames for all that he's done, the mayor, the City Council, and their staff. In addition, as President, we have some concerns regarding the CCNRs that D.R. Horton will adapt, regarding the storage or parking of boats and RVs on the sides and in the backyards of the homeowner's property that can be seen above the fence line. We'd like your guidance on how our point of view can be heard. On a personal note, I have a privacy concern of our new neighbors being able to see into our backyard. Our home backs up to Greenway, right across the street from D.R. Horton's planned subdivision. My wife and I specifically selected the lot because of the originally planned construction of a church, and arranged our home and backyard so that no one, including our neighbors, had the ability to view our backyard. I'd like to request that lots 1, 2, 3, and 4 be restricted to single-story homes, only to maintain our privacy. I'd also like to thank Holly James, Ryan Reed, for their time and patience, and also apologize once again for our last meeting. Our intent of getting together was to inform and be informed. The meeting appeared to get out of control by a few of the homeowners present. Holly, Ryan, again, my apologies. In closing, once again, I'd like to thank you all for what you do. Good job.
Thank you very much. The developer, I'd like to come forward now.
My name is Ryan Weed. I work with Cohen Van Leeu Engineering. Our office is at 4550 North 12th Street in Phoenix. I would like to at least address the item Mark raised regarding the single-story restrictions along 75th Avenue, or I'm sorry, along Greenway Road. We've already, we believe we've already made a huge concession by dropping essentially 25% to 30% of our homes, by reducing it from 19 lots down to 12 lots. Obviously, that was done in, as a means of moving the project forward and giving the neighborhood what they desired at the neighborhood meeting. All of the other, the other two communities that we're adjacent to do not have single-story restrictions within their community. Buyers were able to purchase and select homes in accordance with what floor plan they felt best met the needs of their family. D.R. Horton requests that within these 12 lots, what's now 12 lots, that we have the ability to do the same. Also, restriction of those four lots would then further, again, another third of those, of the lots that are for sale, would then be restricted to single-story floor plans only. Also, there is a considerable buffer, being Greenway Road, from the homes that would be constructed to Mr. Scusell's residence. Well over 100 feet, I would imagine probably closer to 150 feet, would separate the new homes that would be constructed, whether they're single-story or two-story, from Mr. Scusell's existing residence. Are there any questions regarding Mr. Scusell's questions related to RV and boat storage on the, on the side yard that we need to address?
Questions, Mr. Council? Thank you. Questions or comments on the rezoning application? Can I press? Is that probably working? Oh, no. I need to change channels here, I'm sorry.
I don't have that screen over here, so you're going to be addressing yourself.
Okay. I'm sorry, you're up. Learned how to drive this thing.
Yes, I was happy to see we had a good resolution here with the developer, D.R. Horton, and the neighborhoods, and I'm very pleased about that. And I think it's the kind of way that neighborhoods and developers can work together well, and I hope everyone involved is happy and is successful, and I think we'll have a nice development there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, could I have a motion? So moved. It's been moved, and seconded, moved by Mr. Ames, seconded by Ms. Carlet. This is 37R, rezoning 75th Avenue and Greenway Road, continued from April 19, 2013. Please vote. The clerk will record the vote. It is unanimous. Thank you very much. Next item up is 38R, public hearing, liquor licenses at various locations. First location is a new restaurant liquor license, Series 12, for Stevie's New York Pizza, located at 28465 North Costanza Boulevard, Suite 101. Second is a person-to-person transfer for an on-sale, all liquor license, Series 6, for Neighbors, located at 7530 West Peoria Avenue, Suite F. Third one is a new wine and beer liquor license, Series 10, for 99-cent-only store, located at 8375 West Thunderbird Road. Could I have a staff report, please?
Yeah, Katie Gregory, from our Finance and Budget Department, will make the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. All properties were posted in accordance with the Arizona statutes. All receiving departments recommend approval. All fees were paid, and no comments were received from the public.
Thank you. And now, we'll open a public hearing. This is a public hearing on all three liquor license applications. Would anyone in the public care to comment? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment. I have a request to speak from Ryan Weed.
That was the last gentleman.
Okay, because if he put down his 38R, sorry. All right. Questions or comments? Seeing none, could I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Leone, seconded by Ms. Carlet. Once again, this is 38R, public hearing for three liquor licenses. A Series 12 for Stevie's New York Pizza, a Series 6 for Neighbors, and a Series 10 for 99-cent-only store. Please vote. The clerk will record your vote. It is unanimous. Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to announce that 39R, the public hearing on annexation, Pinnacle Peak Road and 75th Avenue alignments, has been pulled at the request of the staff, so we will consider that at another time. Next item up is 40R, Code Amendment, Chapter 26, zoning.
Mayor and Council, this is just a cleanup of the city code. When the city code was adopted in 1991, it contained a chapter for a zoning code. We have a standalone zoning code. We have never used it, nor do we have any intention of using it, and so this is to simply clean up the code and delete that chapter. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Do we have any questions or comments? Seeing none, could I have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded by Ms. Carlet, seconded by Mr. Ames. This is 40R, Code Amendment, Chapter 26, zoning. Please vote. Clerk will record your vote. It is unanimous. Thank you very much. Next is the call to the public on non-agenda items. David Evans.
Mayor and members of the City Council, my name is David Evans. Live at 7636 West Lachlan Court, and I work on contract for It's All in the Game. In many ways, Peoria is a destination community. People come to Peoria for, to go to the lake, to go to Lake Pleasant, to buy a new car, to enjoy baseball, to play golf, attend theater, study at a university, understand space travel, or take up soaring, just to name a few of our draws. We can look forward to more people coming to work at places like Maxwell Industries or startup medical device companies. We now have an opportunity that allows us to benefit our entire community. A developer is proposing an exciting development project to brighten our economic and quality of life opportunities. It will provide a full-service hotel and convention center that we have lacked, high-end urban-style condominiums, unique retail and entertainment attractive to everyone. The project ensures its success through a guaranteed income stream for 40 years at $500,000 a year or more. A key to developing this is a comprehensive ordinance addressing opportunities for electric signage. Allowing quality electric signage on the 101 would certainly help our new car dealers compete with dealerships in other communities, and several smaller wayfinding electronic signs in the P-83 would help our businesses get their message out. Peoria has a definite need for a full-service hotel and convention center to enhance business and recreational tourism. The P-83 proposal will provide the resources and environment to have top-notch community celebrations for Christmas and other holidays. We can have frequent community 3D light shows that will attract out-of-towners and bring us together. The project and the year-round activities will bring more and higher-level events to the sports complex. Part of All in the Game's business plan involves attracting nationally-known athletes to train with us and to receive state-of-the-art, sports-related, orthopedic medical care. Like a number of other businesses in the area, we look to the city to complete their work with the developer and make this development a reality. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is the report from the City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Barrett. Just a couple of items under my report. The first is an informational item from Julie Ayers, our Human Resources Director, regarding the apprenticeship program that the city has for individuals in our water and wastewater utilities. And this is an innovative program, as the council's aware, and we've been recognized by the state as the first of its kind in Arizona. The next item is from John Sefton, our Community Services Director, and John will come up and give you a brief overview of a couple of upcoming events that his department hosts.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. Welcome back from summer break, and I'm very happy to share with you some great news and a couple of great events that are designed to celebrate America, celebrate our first responders, and to really bring the community together. On September 7, from noon to 4 here at Centennial Plaza, we'll have the Red, White, and Blues Festival. Everybody's into blues music, right? What a great opportunity to come together, have some fun, have some food, celebrate our freedom, and recognize the heroism that our severely injured soldiers are experiencing. A big event, a big, important event to really recognize the heroism there. And 12 to 4 is important, because by ending at 4, we can get up bright and early the very next morning at 6:00 a.m., and with the first responders, adult and youth sprint, triathlon, duathlon, for all the runners and swimmers out there. Get an opportunity to come up to Sunrise Mountain Pool, dive in, give a good run, get a splash, and have a good time. And that's going to celebrate our first responders and exercise our physical abilities. Thank you.
Thank you, John. The last item I have, Mayor and Council, of course, we're all very painfully aware of the tragic loss of life in the fire in Yarnell in Yavapai County, the 19 brave firefighters who lost their lives fighting the wildfire there. And what you may not be aware of is the extent to which the City of Peoria staff went up to Yavapai County and to that area to support the City of Prescott and Yavapai County and the communities that were so devastated by the fire and the tragedy. I've asked Chief Reese and Chief Minter to come up and share a little bit with you about how personnel in those two departments aided the communities in Yavapai County. Chief Reese? What a great opportunity to come together, have some fun, have some food, celebrate our freedom, and recognize the heroism that our severely injured soldiers are experiencing. A big event, a big important event to really recognize the heroism there. And 12 to 4:00 is important because by ending at 4:00, we can get up bright and early the very next morning at 6:00 a.m., and with the first responders, adult and youth sprint, triathlon, duathlon, for all the runners and swimmers out there. You have an opportunity to come up to Sunrise Mountain Pool, dive in, give a good run, get a splash, and have a good time. And that's going to celebrate our first responders and exercise our physical abilities. Thank you.
Thank you, John. The last item I have, Mayor and Council, of course, we're all very painfully aware of the tragic loss of life in the fire in Yarnell in Yavapai County, the 19 brave firefighters who lost their lives fighting the wildfire there. And what you may not be aware of is the extent to which the city of Peoria staff went up to Yavapai County and to that area to support the city of Prescott and Yavapai County and the communities that were so devastated by the fire and the tragedy. I've asked Chief Reese and Chief Minter to come up and share a little bit with you about how personnel in those two departments aided the communities in Yavapai County. Chief Reese?
Thank you, Mr. Swenson. Mayor and Council, gives me great honor to report to you the participation, the help, and the difference our members have made during this tragic event, one of the biggest tragic events in the history of Arizona. Our members were there during the Yarnell fire. We helped in many different aspects of the tragic event, starting with the Yarnell fire itself. We had a Yarnell fire crew there that, that was actually assisting with the fire and was responsible for the evacuation of hundreds of people in Yarnell when the fire event was taking place. When the bell was rung and it came over the radio, the cry for help from the, from the 19 that they were overcome by, by the fire, our crew, being the only ones that, that had paramedics, started to head up towards the, the 19 to accomplish a rescue, but were met with a huge wall of fire that, that moved four miles in 20 minutes. To put that in perspective, for you that have ran 10K races or 10K runs or jogs, is it would be equivalent to running a 10K in under 30 minutes. Most of us can't do that, couldn't do that in high school. So it moved very quickly, it hampered everything, and unfortunately, the 19 lost their lives. While that was going on, we had another group that was working on the command staff there at Yarnell. Our, our crews also here went up, thanks to, to your kindness of lending our resources up to Prescott, our crews, and there were full crews of paramedic engines that went up to, to Yarnell with, with full resources and staffed the fire stations there for six days, 24 hours a day, including the Fourth of July, which was one of the busiest days of Prescott time. And so they, they staffed one of the busiest stations, their main station there, for, for six days while a lot of their members grieved and, and kind of gathered together. The other thing is, is our members were also part of the incident management team there in Prescott, helping with the logistics and, of, of the memorial and all the funerals, which was just astronomical. One of the other things that, that our people participated very much was in, on the honor guard, and we had more people than I could list here on the honor guard, and they were responsible for watching the deceased of the 19s while they were here in town at the coroner's office and, and being autopsied, and they watched the, the members, the 19 members 24 hours a day for the period of time they were here. And they also lined the streets and, and helped assist getting the, the bodies back to Prescott and helped during the, the memorial event and throughout the funerals, which were, were more than a dozen. We also had bike, bagpipers and drummers that participated, paid it not only during the memorial where they had more than 300 pipers and, and drummers from all over the country, and it was phenomenal, but also during all the funerals that followed, is we had our bagpipers and drummers. The event was enormous. Our honor guards also participated in helping the family of, of the 19 get around back and forth to the funerals there in Prescott, and also escorted the, the sole survivor of the 19 to all the funerals also. Our Peoria charities continue to help raise funding for the families and most currently are, are helping out with the logistics of the Slash Rock Concert that's going to take, take place in Peoria shortly. With all this, most of our members volunteered on their own time. All the honor guards and the pipers and drummers have donated their own time with no pay for the participation and, and helping during these events, and they do it out of the, their own pain in, in identifying with the 19 and their families, and they're showing their appreciation for the 19. I'm, I'm very proud to say that, that because of your generosity, we send a lot of resources up there, and there was many, many other of our firefighters, men and women, that helped out and continue to help out in, in some of the fundraising that is continuously going on for that. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief Reese. Mayor and Council, wanted to give you an update on the Peoria Police Department's involvement in this tragic incident. Our involvement began on July the 1st when we received a request to assist with a motorcade on Grand Avenue where the remains of the firefighters were being transported to the medical examiner's office in Phoenix. Then on July the 2nd, we received a request, all the East and West Valley agencies received a request from the police chief in Prescott for assistance with security and managing special events up there in the Prescott area. We immediately responded by sending a supervisor and five officers up there. They reported up there on July the, the 3rd. We then supplemented those officers with additional officers and then also sent our traffic officers up there. Our officers were up there from July the 3rd until July the 12th. They worked 24/7, providing security at the command post. They also assisted with traffic control during the funeral processions. They also assisted with traffic control during the memorial services, and they also assisted with traffic control during the parades and other special events up there in Prescott. Our officers worked 24/7. They worked 12-hour shifts. They spent a lot of time away from their families and their loved ones, but they did it, and they really enjoyed the opportunity to go up and assist another agency. And on behalf of the, the Peoria Police Department, I want to say that it was truly an honor for us to go up and represent the city and to represent the Peoria Police Department, and we want to thank you for your support in allowing us to go up and assist the community of Prescott during this very tragic event.
And that's it for my report.
On behalf of the council, I think all the residents of the city of Peoria, thank you for your efforts. Next is reports from the city, yeah, really. Next is reports from the city council. We're back. Let's start with, let's start with you, Mr. Leoni.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just glad to see that everybody's back from their vacation. They all look nice and healthy, and now we can go into business and have some good arguments. I did want to thank the firefighters who went up to Yarnell. I want to congratulate them. They did a great job, and they all came back safe. And also the police department, who was on Grand Avenue for the procession, and they all did a great job, the fire department and the police department. We can always depend on them. I just want to mention on July 4th, we're all going a little ways back, the Fourth of July fireworks, fireworks at the sports complex, as usual, as usual, it was always great. They had about 30-plus thousand people there, plus 83rd Avenue was full of people, and it was just a great event, and they all had a good time. And again, the fire department were there, and the police department was there, and we all had a great time and had some good protection there. Want to mention on August the 1st, at the Harkins Theater, we had the volunteer, volunteer night, volunteer night at the Harkins Theater, and they showed the movie, The Wolverines, but I didn't stay to watch them. That's not my bag. But we gave, we gave a lot of plaques, and we gave a lot of door prizes, and it's just great to see, we had about 200 people there, and it was just great to see all these volunteers. As you know, the city of Peoria is full of volunteers, and it's just great. It saved the city a lot of money. The other thing I have is that we had the National Night Out, and I was at the Target Store, 91st Avenue, and we had a lot of kids come in. It was 91st and Northern, and we had a lot of kids come in, and they took pictures on the motorcycles, and the cops were just great. And I thought one kid was going to turn the key and take off with the bike, but they did, they did a great job, and everybody was satisfied and happy. The other thing I'd like to mention is that I want to thank Brent and Natalie for giving me the, the update on this sanitation hauling independent, and I was really surprised when I heard that they haven't paid us for seven years for a license, and I couldn't imagine how that could slip through the cracks. There was no reason for that. I figured they owe us almost $200,000. So far, we've got $72,000, and there's a lot more to come, and I'm hoping that I can get an update on it. The license per year is $6,623. The only one who's paid up for $49,000, $43,931 of waste management. We still got Parkinson's signs in public service and Ariback. There's, they, there's about eight of them. I've only seen about four or five here, and American Hauling is also one of them, and I would hope that we can get the money out of them. It belongs to the city, and that's very important for the city that they, they pay us the money. They come into the city and they pick up the, the garbage at all the commercials, and I feel if they're going to pick it up, and we have a license fee, they should pay the license fee. When you don't pay for seven years, we have a problem in the system someplace. Thank you. God bless you, each and every one of you, and God bless America.
Thank you, Ms. Carlet. Thank you. Mr. Edwards?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, like Mr. Leoni, I attended the Fourth of July Festival over at the Peoria Sports Complex, and Mr. Patena, Mr. Ames were there as well. It was a great opportunity to just enjoy the day and, and watch the fireworks and listen to all the different bands, had a really good time. The following week, on the 12th, I had a great opportunity to take all the young ambassadors for Peoria, along with their counterparts from Ireland. We went out and rented a pontoon boat and spent the day out on the lake doing inner tubing, water skiing and jet skiing. They had a fabulous time, some of those kids from Ireland. I don't think had ever been out on a lake, and they just had a wonderful time. On the 8th of this month, I attended the National Night Out as well at Target, hosted by the Peoria PD. I was at the Bell and 83rd facility, and the turnout was just phenomenal. I appreciate the police department and the Target for hosting that event. And lastly, I would like to invite the residents of the Willow District, along with Ventana Lakes especially, to come out this coming Saturday to the Agua Freeway Truck Route dedication. This is a project that's a long time in coming, and we're finally going to be turning some dirt this weekend and get that road under construction. Mr. McCord, I'm sure we'll see you out there as well, and I just invite everybody to come out and enjoy the festivities.
Where?
Yes, it's way, oh, 8:30 at the Ventana Lakes Yacht Club.
Thank you. Dan?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Ames?
Nothing, nothing this evening. Thank you.
Mr. Patena? Mr. Vero? I've got a couple of comments, and I'm going to cut it in on a gloomy thing. I want to go back to Yarnell. The Peoria Sunset Lions Club, which I belong to, is part of a consortium of Lions Clubs that decided that they needed to do something to help out the people in Yarnell. There were a lot of people that were donating money to the 100 Club and, and food and everything else, and the Lions took a different tack, and what they did is, is they set up a fund to, they, they assumed that the small businesses that were in Yarnell, if they go away, they will never come back. So we, we set up a program whereby we would go up and distribute coupons to people who had been burned out and had nothing, and they could go to some of the restaurants and use the coupon to eat. And what we did is then everybody, most of the people in the club would take turns every couple of days. You'd go up, give those restaurants the checks, and then pick up the receipts from, from the various places that we were supporting and bring them back. They'd cut checks, and then somebody else would go up and back. So it was a, it was a good program, and I think they, I think we're just about done with it now. But it was our, our way of trying to find a way to help an area that, if they, like I said, if they lose their business, they won't come back. The second thing I want to mention about Yarnell is the Theater Works is doing a production of Big, which you may or may not remember the movie where Tom Hanks was dancing on the big piano keys. They're doing that on September 7th, and it is a fundraiser for Yarnell, and I think it's at 7:00 p.m. You can check to the Theater Works to get more information on that. And finally, I'd ask you to keep in your prayers Ken Forgy. He was a former mayor and council member here in the city of Peoria. He served on the council from 91, 1991 through June of 2003. He has passed away, so please keep him and his family in your prayers. And with that, we're adjourned.